Good morning, once again, and we'll call back into session Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, July 25th meeting. You want to establish quorum flow, please?
Sure. Serna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, Natoli, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, well, we've got several items. Go ahead and jump into those.
Okay, item 38, hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges for the city of Rancho Cordova and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
I have a question. Can we take these all at once?
I guess we could bundle the calling. Would that be helpful, Ben?
That would be helpful.
All right, let's go with them all.
I'll just read each title. Item 39, hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges for the city of Citrus Heights and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll. Item 40, hearing to lien delinquent solid waste service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent solid waste service charges be collected on the property tax roll. Item 41, hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll. Item 42, hearing to lien delinquent utility taxes and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility taxes be collected on the property tax roll. And item 43, hearing to lien delinquent water use service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent water use service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, item number 43, you would be actually acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency Board.
Correct. Thanks, Mike.
Good morning. I'm Ben Lamara, Director of Finance, and today in front of you, you have the board reports include preliminary information as of June 17, 2017. There was a, there's also a correction that was made to the June 6, 2017 numbers. We were showing that for the city of Citrus Heights, their stormwater drainage service charges, it was brought up to our attention at the last, at the June 6 board meeting, and so we wanted to make the corrections and we put the corrections in these current reports. So, the number of delinquent utility accounts, they continue to decrease until the transfer of the property tax system is, will be completed in late August. Over the years, the last five years, that number has continued to decrease and we, hopefully for 2017, it will also decrease. As requested in previous years, we will provide a final report as to what utility, delinquent utility taxes have transferred to the property tax roll, and that's actually all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ben, any questions for Ms. Lamara? Okay, all right, standby. We have a speaker signed up on, says item 38, but it may pertain to other service charges as well, so thanks. So, Ms. English, you've signed up, and I know Ms. English has been in contact with my office over the course of past couple of years, and I think she's spoken with the county executive as well, and all that, her speak to the item, but it certainly relates to the utilities and the possibility they could go to, to a lien and then property be sold. So, Ms. English, give me the opportunity to...
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I have been in and out of this building several, several times since Supervisor Yi was still in office. Because of ignorance of district and constituency, I went to Supervisor Yi instead of going to my proper supervisor, Dr. Natoli. I respectfully say hello to you today, sir.
Good morning.
I have the problem with the PUC code. My property is rent to Saritia and Joyce Wright since 2014. They refused according to the rental agreement. I told them to go down to 9,700 Consolidated Utilities Building to register, to be on the bill. The bill has been sent to them. They did, they never went there, and they even tell me a lie recently. They said they had been there, and the white lady in the office tell her, Saritia Wright, she didn't have to pay the water bill. Let the owner pay for it. If the owner lose the money, she can deduct from her income tax. In that case, you don't lose any money, just don't pay. I don't believe that, but I have addressed the problem several times with Ms. Cheryl, Ms. Mackey, here in this building, wrongfully and rightfully, I don't know, but the problem has been so much that the bill, the tax bill imposed on my property is almost over $7,000. The exact amount up to March 29 is $5,022.42, and up to July, it could be $7,000. Those people broke the irrigation pipe intentionally to make the soil soft in order to bury me easily. They even turned off all the switch in the meter so that they claim there is no electricity in the house. My house would burn any time so that they lure me to the property in order to kill me. They even go to my property, my residence in Vacaville, tried to break in an rear door, double pane glass sliding door, and they sent somebody to want to repair that door for $48,500, just that door. And they said that door, nobody broke it, just exploded by itself. So, I'm here, I pray, ladies and gentlemen, to not collect it from me because there is a PUC code that you should collect it from the person who used it because I am in contract with her. She has to pay for it, and just that. I have gone to Senator Wal to get the PUC. I was not admitted in. I went to Ms. Yamata. I was not talked to. I went to Assemblyman Frazier. I was told to let my property go to foreclosure by the caseworker, Karen Nolan. So, I walk over to Congressman Gary Mendy. Caseworker Lowen helped me by calling over to Senator Wal, and within five minutes, he got the PUC code by fax, and he gave a copy to me. I brought to this office. I brought to every office, and I even enclosed it in the email or mail or memo that I sent to different offices. I had called Executive Officer Navdeep Gil.
Navgi, right there. He's right here, Ms. English.
Yes, and he had sent, I thank him because he has delegated two ladies to help me, but nothing could be done. So, I beg you, gentlemen and ladies, to reconsider my case.
Okay, thank you. Missing, yes.
Because I'm 83 years old, and I don't want to be homeless. I work for every penny I make. Last night, I came home. Yesterday, I had an assignment in Los Angeles. I spent 24 hours awake, not to be late, in court, and I came back home after midnight. So, I don't have the copy of that PUC code with me, but I have other thing. I could not review my file.
Okay.
And I thank you for your time and for your intentions in listening to me.
Okay, thank you.
Humbly yours. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Ms. English, and I know that Cheryl, my office has been in contact. I know Mr. Gill, and I've, you know, I have copies of your correspondence, and it's been shared, obviously, with Mr. Lamara, who is our, who heads up our finance department, and Ms. Randolph, who has the consolidated buildings section. And I don't know whether, Mr. Gill, you wanted to add anything? I know Mr. Villanueva's been involved and so forth, and the problem is, is that the charges have to be paid by somebody, and I think there may be some language, and I'm not that familiar with the Public Utilities Code, but ultimately, the property owner who has a rental agreement with renters, whether they pay or not, there's a responsibility goes with that property ownership. I don't want to see you or anybody else lose their property because of that, but I do believe these have gone to lien because there's some charges go back to 2013, if I'm not mistaken. This hasn't just happened in the last year or two. It's actually been something...
I have been up to date, up to 2013, paid everything.
Right.
But 2014, I had Marco Wilson, whose mother worked as a fundraiser for President Obama. They wanted me to contribute. I did not have the money to contribute because they didn't pay the rent.
Okay.
And I evicted him. The bill is, was, water bill was $1,400.
Right.
It went into my tax roll. It increased my payment, my impound account. That I have to accept it because I cannot, I don't have the arm long enough to reach that.
We have the documentation. You've been very good about documenting that, so let us have our folks take a look at it. Today, though, we have the presentation for all the accounts that are delinquent. This one still is delinquent. Understanding the circumstance you presented. So, Mr. Gill, is there anything else you wanted to maybe add?
I was just going to offer that we're going to continue to work with, with her about what options we have, this new PUC item. I think Ben and Wendy are here to work with her.
Okay, because we did, we did reduce some of the penalties. I know earlier this spring, about $400. I think you were informed of that, Ms. English, but we, what Mr. Gill has said is that we'll continue to work with you to see what we can do. Again, there is a private rental agreement recognized in all the circumstances, and you've been very clear in your correspondence about that. And so, Mr. Gill, and certainly folks that are here in the audience, we'll continue to work with you and see what we can do to alleviate the situation, but it's not an easy one, as you well know.
I appreciate that, sir. I appreciate it very much that you reconsider looking at my situation.
Okay.
Because I have contract with a tenant, and the tenant hide that addendum by which I say you are to register for the utilities before moving in July 26, 2014, and she doesn't do that.
Okay, all right. And we have people here today, so it may be that, once we conclude the hearing, Mr. Lamara and Ms. Randolph who are here could talk with you personally, and if there's other information that might be...
I appreciate it. I appreciate it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right. Is there anyone else here that wish to address the, any delinquent charges to be leaned?
No, ma'am.
Okay, if not, then we have a bundle here. We can take all those as one motion then, and...
I'll move the, all of the items.
Okay. Moving second then to approve the items. Please vote.
You know, I'm just vote with those members present.
Okay, and then maybe Mr. Lamara, Ms. Randolph, you could meet Mrs. English in the, in the lobby and talk with her further, so. All right, thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
I'm just going to go ahead and read it. We're two minutes early.
Oh, okay, well...
Item 44, review repurposing concept for Sacramento County Boys Ranch and approve lease negotiations with Carson Creek Ranch Food and Agriculture Center.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, and members of the board.
Good morning, Ms. Morris.
Mike Morris with Department of General Services, and this morning, we are seeking the board's direction to conduct our due diligence investigations regarding the organizational and financial viability of the Carson Creek Ranch Food and Agriculture Center and entered into negotiations to repurpose a portion of the Sacramento County Boys Ranch. The Carson Creek FAC will be a newly formed nonprofit agriculture, educational, research, and development organization that is seeking a minimum five-year lease to use some of the buildings and the Boys Ranch property for their new programs. As the board is, will recall, previous attempts to repurpose the Boys Ranch have not panned out. Two organizations wanted to operate some form of correctional facility, which local neighbors and communities strongly oppose so near their homes and businesses. The most recent attempt was a horse rescue and rehabilitation center, but the construction and logistics were too costly, and the submitter opted for a more move-in-ready location. Now, the goals of the Carson Creek FAC are to provide opportunities for research, development, and advancement of local food systems, and to develop future leaders in food and agriculture science. The current proposal is to retool some of the existing buildings and develop the land, and to study and develop commercial food and agriculture production, processing, manufacturing, and distribution. The Africa-USA International Chamber of Commerce, California Black Chamber of Commerce, and the California Black Agriculture Working Group are leading the effort to create the Carson Creek Ranch organizational structure. The organizers are engaging agriculture industry leaders, business investors, and regional educational institutions as collaborative partners, and they are eager to begin developing agribusiness specialty crop production while educating youth towards job and career opportunities. The funding will depend on private investment capital. The organization will also pursue California Department of Food and Agriculture and United States Department of Agriculture funding, as well as seeking agriculture industry partnerships and sponsorships to guide those budget startup costs and develop a three-year Carson Creek Food and Agriculture Business Plan. County staff received very little response from our outreach to the local communities and the neighboring property owners, but the feedback we did receive has been positive as to the intent of the Carson Creek program. I met with, actually, the project manager and I, we met with the Kasumna CPAC on April 26. They have two primary concerns. One was regarding the amount of potential traffic on Scott Road, the condition of which has been an ongoing issue in some of the local communities. The Carson Creek organizers indicated that for the foreseeable future, they would only expect to see a handful, four to six cars a day on that road. CPAC members were also uneasy regarding the financial viability of the program, and I'll be introducing the project manager in just a moment, and he can address that issue in more detail. Generally, the Boys Ranch property seems to be well-suited to support the proposed program, and the unique mission of the Carson Creek FAC accommodates the neighbors' interests. That said, with the board's approval, county real estate staff is prepared to enter into negotiations to determine the practicality of the Carson Creek FAC and hopefully craft a mutually agreeable lease agreement to bring back to the board. Additionally, I do want to mention that because of the limited facility requirements of the Carson Creek FAC, county staff will continue to pursue other potential programs for the unused Boys Ranch facilities. Now, at this time, I'd like to introduce Michael Harris to say a few words about the Carson Creek venture. Michael Harris is a native of Sacramento. He serves as Chair of the California Black Agriculture Working Group. It's a statewide multidisciplinary collaborative that develops action plans to increase the number and participation by urban and rural agriculture producers of African ancestry. For over 15 years, Mr. Harris served as the Development Director of the California Black Farmers and Agricultural Association, and for five years, as a member of the USDA Community-Based Organization Partners Team. Michael is, and he is the current project manager for the Carson Creek FAC.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, Chair Natoli. How you doing?
Good.
Board, it's, it's good to be back. Good seeing y'all. It's been a long time since I've been at this particular place, but Sacramento's home, and my parents are here, my grandson is here, and, and the project is, really, I see it as a win-win, is to repurpose the facility into a positive thing, as a food and egg center. It originally was a ranch back in the Gold Rush era, and it's been used off and on ever since as a production facility, and it's a good partnership, I believe, and provide innovations to, we're at the Farm to Fort Capital, and there's some innovative techniques and some positive job creation aspects that we really want to pursue at the site. And we have some, you know, pretty powerful individuals that are with the state, Aubrey Stone, the California Black Chamber of Commerce, Reverend Al Washington, he's the Director of the Africa-USA Chamber of Commerce. So, we're going to do some innovative things of, not only to lift up the, we're right at 1% of black agricultural producers in the number-one state for, for a lot of reasons, but the main reason now is, looking forward is, well, you have to be competitive. You have to do innovations. You have to be educated. So, that's what we're looking So that's what we're looking at, is STEM programs, and we're adding the A, agriculture, into STEAM programs, most people are familiar with. Some people, it's art, well, art and agriculture kind of go together if you're going to be creative and produce crops that are on the cutting edge and high yield for a better way of eating nutritious food and getting food to the people that need it. Yeah, that's pretty much kind of an overview. It's really looking at, it's a lot of words to say it's a farm incubator, is really what it is. And looking at how to provide the business side of agriculture, which we all know, I mean, if the bottom line is not there, it's not going to work. That's kind of-
All right. Well, thanks, Michael, for being here, and I know that you've certainly had a chance to, to tour the facilities, and, you know, you've been working on this, at least the idea of it, for, you know, better part of a year, if not a little longer. And I think as the staff report outlines, certainly, obviously, it's ambitious, yet probably a very doable idea, and one where, obviously, with the land there, and certainly some of the facilities that are in place, I think presents a fairly grand opportunity for, for doing some of the things that you've certainly described in your proposal. I wanted to note, it's important, I think, too, because of the size of facility, in fact, I actually visited it last week, again, that there, as Mr. Morris noted, too, there is at least one or two other animal rescue groups, not the All About Aquine, that have been looking at the facilities, and obviously, with the visitor's center, and some of the classrooms, and some of the dormitory units, and shops, and so forth, there's, you know, some of those could be repurposed very quickly, others, you know, could be utilized with, you know, some alterations. And so, I think that's just important to note, because obviously, you're a fledgling organization, and have, you know, I think, obviously, the expertise and experience you bring, and the support of a good board, and, you know, some funding opportunities that will probably have to come in the past in order to, to achieve some of the goals outlined here. But just wanted to make sure that's clear, because, again, you go out there and you look at, you get this 120 acres and all the various facilities, and yet, you know, it's been maintained in a mothball status, and the fields themselves need to be attended to, but there, you know, I think there's some great possibilities, you know, there's a barn and an agricultural well, and potable water on site, and electricity and so forth. And so, in this, you pointed out, though, the kind of tentative calendar, is that still the calendar? Obviously, you finalized your, the creation of your board and establishment of your nonprofit, but, because now it shows, at least, for purposes of your second phase, actually, something this fall. Is that still a goal, or is that a little bit overstated or understated?
Well, yes. It's, it was ambitious to start with.
Yeah.
You really don't know what you, what all the totality is until you really get into it, start digging in. But we're, we're looking at that same timeline, really looking at putting crops in the ground, you know, the first of the year, you know, depending on the weather.
Yeah, no, yeah, well, right. And if the creek doesn't rise, because-
Well, you know, ironically, some of the buildings, and that's Adele White, she's in here, is, some of the, the buildings lend themselves for innovative projects. There's, you know, year-round growing of lettuce indoors, and, you know, putting in solar, maybe panels to, like, fund that, and really look at being, that building being off-grid, so to speak, and producing year-round lettuce, which is, you know, the number-three product.
Is that, is that the greenhouse that was partially constructed? Is that what you're talking about, the one that has the frame up, or you're-
Well, yeah, half, half that building is up, and it could be used, but inside of the building, one of the old dorms could be used.
For, for a growing-
It wouldn't be preferable, but that's, that's an option as well.
Yeah. Okay. Well, again, I think today's purpose was certainly to give you a chance to, you know, outline the proposal, have Mr. Morris, you know, talk about the work thus far, and tell those discussions to continue, and see what sort of terms could be arrived at, and recognizing that, you know, you may be the first, first out there, but there may be some other uses, and we'll hopefully find compatible uses that, you know, again, would repurpose that in a way that we can all be proud of, and certainly achieve some of the, the goals of supporting agriculture and farming, and whether it be in the African-American community or elsewhere. I think eating nutritiously and having good foods available, and people having a standing after that are really important. So I think that that's, you know, those are very noble goals, and hopefully ones that can be achieved here. So Supervisor Frost, you had a question?
My, my question relates to the mothball state. We're spending $490,000 a year to mothball the facility.
Mike, back up at the microphone.
And in our report, it talks about 190,000 of that is maintenance. So can we assume that if we lease a portion of this facility to this organization, that then the maintenance cost will go away, and so, we'll be whole on the maintenance plus whatever rent is negotiated?
Supervisor Frost, our aim will be to see what we can offset, and that's what part of this exploration the next couple of months Mike and his folks are going to be doing, and that will be a goal, but that's a negotiation item at this point.
So this is not a commitment? This is just to open discussions?
Correct.
That's why we're hearing this, right?
That's correct.
And I would just say, to make all that go away is pretty ambitious on this side of the house. I mean, again, I think the goal would be to reduce maintenance costs and have tenants there that, because there's security, there's upkeep of the grounds in a mothball status. The building's actually in fairly, fairly good shape, and by keeping HVAC systems, because I, again, whether it's Mr. Harris's organization or others that might be out there, to take all that down at one time, unless you had a very philanthropic-
But we can hope.
Yeah, we can hope. But I wanted to offer an explanation, though, that, that, you know, I think that this would offset some of that, because, again, if anybody's visited the facility, it's, it's a big, it's a big place. And there's a sewer, pond facility, and there are wells that are off-site that, you know, would not be the sole responsibility of one or even all of our rent. I think as, as a landlord, we're going to have some responsibility irrespective of that, so.
And is Mr. Harris working with the schools, the colleges in the area, or, you said incubators, so?
Well, actually, what's going on right now is, is that demonstration that is the first STEM program with UC Davis. My sister, she's a dean at, at a Kasuma River College that has, you know, one of the only, or actually, the only in Los Rios District, urban agricultural program. So, yes, we, we're definitely working collaborative with them, and they're chomping at the bit, because they, quite frankly, we need to get a little further down the road, because sometimes you see, like, taken-over stuff, and we don't want that to happen. We want to be good collaborative partners. But, yeah, we're, we're working with the schools.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Harris? If not, thanks, Mike, for being here, Mike and Mike, both of you, for your work, and we'll hear more as you continue to, you know, talk through some of the details here, and obviously, there's some, some real possibilities to offset costs, but also to have, you know, promote some good programs, and this may be the first of several, so. Okay. Very good. So do we, this is receiving file today, then? Or do we want to, we just approve this concept, and then direct, Director of General Services to continue to work on negotiating?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the motion. All right. Move Staff Recommendation. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Let me see. Thank you, Mike. All right. Next item.
Item 45, public hearing on participation in the California Statewide Communities Development Authority's Statewide Community Infrastructure Program.
All right.
Mr. Davison's coming down to make the presentation.
Okay. Mr. Davison. PowerPoint, I see.
Yes, I have a PowerPoint presentation. So I'm Bob Davison with the County Engineering Division, and I'm here to present the statewide community infrastructure program, which throughout the presentation, I'll be calling the Skip program. This program's known as Skip throughout California. And today, we're asking your board to take two actions. The first is a resolution joining the Skip program, and then various related actions. And the second is a resolution amending the policies to participate in Skip. And the policies is just a simple policy resolution that, we have our very intricate county assessment district and Melrose financing policies, and this simply amends the policies to allow this Skip program as an option. So what is Skip? Skip. Skip is a pooled tax-exempt financing program that allows certain developers and home builders, property owners who are doing smaller projects to enjoy the same kind of tax-exempt bond financing and special tax financing that other larger developers are currently allowed with items like our county Melrose community facilities districts. So right now, a large developer could come in, like Lennar, for example, or North Vineyard Station, and they can, you know, do several million, up to 20, $30 million of infrastructure, and fund that with a special tax on the property, securing bonds are issued to fund that infrastructure. Well, small projects, such as parcel maps, small subdivisions, and small commercial and industrial projects, cannot afford themselves the same type of financing, just because of the cost of such districts and the economies of scale. So what Skip has is, has, it's a pooled tax-exempt program that allows for assessment districts to be set up up and down California, and it pools those districts, and they do bond issues that, and this allows for the economies of scale so that individually, none of those small subdivisions, let's say, would be able to do the, do the program on their own, but with the pooled financing, you can have subdivisions up and down California and other small projects basically enjoying those, the same benefits. So any city, county, or special district can participate in Skip as part of this program, whereas with the county Melrose district, the county forms a district, the county implements a special tax, collects a special tax, and the county issues bonds and manages the whole district. The California Statewide Communities Development Authority, which is a California joint powers authority of which the county is a member of, will be doing most of that work. And later on, I'll be showing you exactly what the county's role is in this process, and, and what the CSCDA does. But bonds are issued, they're 30-year fixed-rate tax-exempt bonds, similar to the county Melrose bonds, and they're secured by property owner assessments, you know, similar to assessments or taxes on such districts in the county. One important point, and this is a point that was negotiated with the CSCDA, on county Melrose districts and on county PACE programs, actually, that's not the county PACE programs, but the PACE programs that the county participates in, because of the county's TETER program, we have negotiated covenants and requirements in the past that basically say that even though these districts allow accelerated judicial foreclosure, which means, you know, that it doesn't go through the normal five-year process for, for delinquencies, and so, basically, mom and pop, you know, could be foreclosed upon quicker. But because the county participates in the TETER program, which basically, unless the security, that the risk is too much for a certain property, most delinquent taxes and assessment in the county are picked up by the TETER program. So as in the Melrose districts and in the PACE programs, we were, wanted to work out something with CSCDA to where if there was a delinquent property, but the taxes were paid, that, you know, county residents weren't being foreclosed upon. So that took some time, but ultimately, we reached an accord with the CSCDA, and today's resolution basically says that if the TETER's going to pay the delinquent amount, then, you know, please don't foreclose on anybody. And if, for some reason, TETER doesn't pick up those delinquent amounts, and then they can go through the accelerated foreclosure process. And that works exactly like our county Melrose districts, and exactly like how the third-party PACE programs operate in our county. This just shows you who's doing Skip in California, and so far, there's 75 total members that are, are participating in the Skip program, and over 150 projects have been financed. And then there's a list of local jurisdictions, so many of our local counties and cities already participate in the Skip program. There are basically two bond issues per year, so they line up all the projects up and down California to be in one of the two bond issues, and that's how they pool them. So since 2003, they've done 26 bond issues, they've issued almost 400 million bonds, and 163 projects have been financed all across the state, 10,000 residential projects, 12 million-plus commercial square feet. So you can see that 60% of the projects are residential, but this is a program for commercial and industrial developments as well. So with that, and this goes over the benefits of Skip. It allows for competitive, and some of this I've gone over already, but allows for competitive financing to developers. It's an economic development tool, and the slide before you showed you the amount of commercial and industrial developments, so it's not just a residential economic development tool. One of the big benefits of Skip, which I've already alluded to, is that it can finance projects as low as $500,000. And right now, there's, there isn't an option for land-secured financing in the county that, that can go that low. The, like, the economies of scales just do not work out. The benefits to the property owner, first of all, it is voluntary, so nobody's forced to join Skip. It's completely up to a developer, home builder, or property owner to apply for Skip. It allows for the low, low-cost, long-term financing. Smaller projects, like I mentioned, can have the same benefits as the county Melrose districts, and the economies of scale actually allows for the more competitive rates on these financings. Even if a small project was able to go through and, and do one of the districts with the county, for example, they might not enjoy the same interest rate or lower costs that you might be able to by doing these pooled bond issues statewide. So there are four program options for, for the customers with today's resolution. First of all, there's the impact fee reimbursement program, and for this, property owners who've already paid impact fees can apply, and then Skip bonds are issued, the property owner will be reimbursed his fees he paid, and then the county will move to Skip to hold for watching arbitrage and, and other issues related to the money. They will, they will hold the money. However, it will be, it will be, is just like it's the fund balance of our county, let's say, impact fee funds. So right now, our county impact fee funds are with the county, but a portion of our fund balance will be with the, with the statewide community, the CSCDA. The second option is the impact fee pre-funding program, and this would be, a developer hasn't paid his fees yet, the Skip bonds could be issued, which would allow him to prepay the impact fees, and then no impact fees would be due at building permit unless the fees went up, and they'd have to pay, pay the differential. This also allows funding of improvements, so an example would be a small subdivision having to do their frontage improvements, you know. If those frontage improvements and maybe other improvements required for the small subdivision were over several hundred thousand, and they combine that with some other fees, then, you know, they would be able to fund improvements through the Skip program as well. And then finally, which I just mentioned, is combined program, any of the three options that I just discussed above can be combined for, for one project with Skip. So with today's Skip resolution, basically, what fees can be skipped at this point would be the Sacramento County transportation development fees, and also plan area roadway development fees like Antelope, North Vineyard Station, Vineyard Mather, and any new growth area that comes forward. And then, and the reason for this is, a lot of the, there's some fees that can't be part of the program because of the requirements. One of the requirements is that the money should be spent in three years. Our county library fees typically are held for a long period of time, so we can't sign any type of document that says we expect that these fees will be spent in three years. But with roadway fees, those fees come in, and those fees are usually spent as soon as we get them, or we're saving for a project, we're trying to build the projects as quick as we can, so roadway fees are more eligible for Skip. Other fees, we may investigate in the future, adding to the program, but with other agencies, I mean, we would have to have agreements with other agencies and such. And so, we will explore, for example, in the future, allowing maybe water agency roadway drainage fee, I mean, I'm sorry, drainage and water supply fees to be added to the mix. But today's resolution would add these roadway fees. And then eligible improvements would be, like I said, frontage, street sidewalks, street lighting, and, and various other improvements that would be required with development projects in the county. So the requirements for our local agency to participate in Skip, well, we are a member of CSCDA, and today, the Skip resolution is before you. of CSCDA, and today, the Skip resolution is before you. A project would have to bring applications to the county, and today's actions delegate to me, the county engineer, signing of these applications, and then county staff would review and verify eligible fees and the information contained in the engineers' reports, which the Skip program would be preparing and bringing to the CSCDA board. And then, if we actually do improvements, we, there would be acquisition agreements prepared, the form of the acquisition agreement is with today's items, and today's item would delegate to the county executive to sign the acquisition agreements, which we would expect would be between $300,000 and $1 million. And then, the local agency also will, then, if those acquisition agreements are entered into, like with our Melrose Districts, we would, county staff would review the approved reimbursements and the constructed projects and the invoices and the plans and such, to make sure that they were constructed as they were supposed to be and that the amounts paid are the correct amounts. And then, ultimately, we, county staff, would approve the requisition of funds related to those acquisition projects. So, this just quickly goes through the schedule of proceedings that happened with each Skip project. After the applications are received, and like I said, they pull them up and down the state of California, Skip prepares the engineers' report, Skip establishes the districts on a city-by-city or a county-by-county basis, and there are two financing a year, so they try to consolidate all of the Skip applications into the two financings each year. All proceedings are conducted by the CSCDA. The hearing and the Lennar vote, which this board is familiar with for our local Melrose Districts, they're conducted by the CSCDA, and then the CSCDA also authorizes the sale of the bonds, and then the transaction would be closed after that, and the funds would be delivered. Most of that happens at the CSCDA. The only local agency are the items I went to on the previous, went through on the previous slide. So, with today's actions, it would implement a $3,800 application fee, and just so you know, other local agencies have implemented similar fees, the City of Sacramento implemented a $3,800 fee, I think Placer County implemented a $5,000 fee, and that's to cover the county cost of processing those applications. If the costs are more than $3,800, today's actions would allow up to 1.5% of the county portion of the bond proceeds to be used to recover any costs in addition to the $3,800 that have been incurred. And then, future acquisition agreements, because the administration related to those would be more intensive, future acquisition agreements would have an estimate in each agreement for, you know, what the county costs to process those reimbursements, and those acquisition agreements would be.
Good question.
I have a question, Mr. Davidson. So, on the costs, the fees, the $3,800, is that an average of what everybody else is, what the other jurisdictions are charging, or is it?
It's, I didn't contact all jurisdictions, I talked to the CSCDA, you know, they certainly informed me that Rockland, Placer County had a $5,000 application fee in place. The City of Sacramento just did Skip resolution several months ago, and their fee that they put in place was $3,800, so.
And what is that supposed to cover?
That would cover the county costs associated with receiving the Skip applications, reviewing the applications, you know.
Have you done a cost analysis to see, I mean, is that staff time, is that what we're talking about?
Mostly staff time.
It just seems like a lot to me, so, for staff time, if you're reviewing an application before you send it on to someone else who's going to review and fund the application, how'd you come up with the hours?
Okay, good. The only added point to that is, is not only just the review of an application, there's also, will need to be some establishment, record-keeping that gets applied to these two, so. And we really haven't run one of these all the way through, so we're actually basing it on other jurisdictions who've done some time with this. The caveat in terms of cost potentially going greater than $3,800 is that then the 1.5% for the bond proceeds could be applied to this cost, say, it took $5,000, and you do have to reduce it by the $3,800, but we think we're on the low end as a starting point for processing these.
Back up.
Yeah.
Right, I think that's right.
No, sorry, just a second, Mike. So, the 1.5% of the bond proceeds, what's that supposed to pay for?
So, it'd be 1.5%, but less than $3,800 application fee, and that would be only for instances where we're tracking our cost, and maybe a project was complicated, maybe there was a lot of discussion back and forth, so it would allow us to, as part of the bond issue, to charge up to 1.5% of the county portion of the bond proceeds for a $500,000 project.
So, you said it would only be if we were tracking the costs. Are you going to track the costs on every application?
Yes, we will.
Because only if sounds like it's sometimes.
No, the only if meant if the cost went above $3,800.
So, we're not going to draw down the 1.5% unless we go over $3,800 in costs?
Right. And we'll track this, so if it's actually costing less than $3,800, I mean, we're certainly willing to adjust that in the future. It is a little bit of an unknown because we've never done this, I did call other jurisdictions to try to find out how much the administration was. The City of Sacramento, they were telling me the process they went through, it's, you know, it seemed like a good process, so, but we can definitely keep track of that.
So, the 1.5%, does that have to be authorized by the board or the county executive? I mean, will there be some control on us knowing if the costs are going over $3,800?
Today's action would authorize up to 1.5% of.
So, a staff person, you authorize getting into that fund, or planning to?
Yeah, today's action doesn't, at this point, doesn't require any board or county executive approval of going into the 1.5%.
Does the applicant, I'm just, it just seems like it could be a chunk of money, and I want to make sure there's appropriate control on it.
Yeah, sure.
I think what I can offer is that if we do end up exceeding $3,800, I'll ask Mr. Penrose to keep me in the loop, let me know what's causing it to go up on those instances, and work with Mr. Penrose.
I'd be more comfortable with that, since we don't know how much it's, what it's going to be, and.
We could give you just a little quick detail from the expert on how the 1.5% bonds are a part of the issuance, it might give just a little more detail to that component.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Chair?
Sure, yes, you bet.
Sorry, Bob.
My name is Bob Williams, I'm with RBC, and I'm the underwriter for Skip.
A little louder, please.
Bob Williams, I'm with RBC Capital Markets, and I'm the underwriter for the Skip program. So, just the mechanics of this is that the $3,800 would be collected at the time the application is submitted, and it's submitted online, and the county does need to review it, they need to go through and verify the fees and entitlements to the project. As far as the 1.5% goes, as we start the proceedings, we prepare what's called an engineers' report. Engineers' report outlines all the fees that are being funded and the improvements and the incidental cost. What we would do here is we would include the 1.5% as an incidental cost for that project.
So, just mechanically, so, the planning department, or Bob's department, I'm not sure which authorizes it, but, so they send, along with the application, they send a charge for 1.5% to the state program?
Well, no, let me just take it a little bit farther. So, when we do the engineers' report, what we're doing is we're establishing all the eligible costs that can be funded with the bonds.
Okay.
On a maximum-not-to-exceed basis. So, when you do an engineers' report, and say, the assessment ends up being a million and a half dollars total adds up, you can't go above a million and a half. In this particular case, at closing, we would ask the county for an invoice for their time. So, you know, if it's.
Is that the ultimate cutoff point, we're not going to come back in five years and take the other half a percent or something?
Yeah, at the time we did the bond issue, we would ask the county for an invoice, they would have to verify their times, this is an assessment, and so even the fees have to be, there has to be a benefit connection. So, if, you know, they will send an invoice, I don't know what it'll be, but if it's a, if it just fees, it's fairly simple, if there's improvements, it's a little more complicated because you have this acquisition agreement. But we would build that fee into the financing on a not-to-exceed basis, and then ask for an invoice at closing, and that would be it.
Is the 1.5% typical for other jurisdictions?
It varies, to be honest with you.
Is it in the middle?
Frankly, it's a little bit on the high side. Some of the projects that we get, you know, if it's $5 million, 1.5% is $75,000, so it really depends.
Okay.
But again, it's.
But all the cost, the charge to the closing statement has to be verified by hours that staff has spent?
Yeah, and I think it gives you some cushion, because, you know, you could have a million-dollar project, that's all improvements, could be a fair amount of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Ms. Frost.
So, it's a one-time fee at closing, and there's not an ongoing annual fee associated with county cost, or after that, it's just, it goes on the tax roll, basically?
That's correct, and the CSCDA covers those costs. As far as the county, the only real cost are, with our fee program, is managing the flow of the funds between CSCDA and the county.
And so, I have a question relating to the lien position. I know, first, I want to say thank you to the North State Building Industry Association for your leadership in bringing this, Chris Norum, to the county's attention and being persistent with that, but especially Mike Penrose and staff who have had an open mind. It was one of the first meetings, the first month when I came to be a supervisor here, that we came to Mike, and Mike said, "Well, let's see what we can do." And, you know what, you have a reputation for that, and it's appreciated by a lot of people, so I wanted to acknowledge you guys. I wanted, my question relates to the lien position, because I remember when PACE came out, and there was all this, everybody was worried because PACE was going to take press at first position before Fannie, or Freddie, or Jenny on the home, as far as the lien position. So, does it, so TEATER is first position, PACE is second, and then whatever financing comes after that?
So, TEATER just guarantees that the assessment revenue will be there, whether the property was delinquent or not, but the lien itself and the lien priority, which is a great question, and you're right about PACE, you know, that has been.
Is it going to, will it impact them?
Well, this is more like a county special tax or assessment that's done before the mortgage is written, because this happens in the development process. What happens with PACE is, those are liens that come on after the mortgage is already there. So, this would actually have first position, and Bob can certainly correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I believe that this would have first position over, say, a mortgage lien, but in this case, this is an assessment that would already be there when the mortgage is written, whereas PACE, it comes after the fact. So, this works more like other special taxes and assessments that are approved by cities and counties all through California. They're typically less, when you add the added value on property tax of 1%, they're typically all less than the 2% amount, and they're a known quantity, a title report would pull it up. Any mortgage holder is going to know about this when they enter into their mortgage.
And it'll appear on their property tax bill.
Yeah, it will be on their property tax bill.
So, how were the cities able to do this before the county? The cities are already doing this? Sacramento, City of Sacramento, they don't have TEATER, they don't have that mechanism?
They actually do, any city in the county can participate in the TEATER program, so it's likely that, it's likely that, say, the City of Elk Grove that participates in Skip, I mean, it's likely that that Skip lien will be teetered, but I don't think there's anything about the City of Elk Grove's Skip resolution that states that, you know, don't foreclose on anybody first if they're part of TEATER, whereas we have that guarantee. Now, it's something that maybe I'd be happy to talk to others in the county about, but it's certainly some, because of our experience with Melrose Districts and having this issue come up before, because of our experience with PACE programs and having that be an issue with implementation of the PACE programs, it's also something that we brought up, you know, as we discussed participating in this program, and I believe that we are the first jurisdiction in California that negotiated such a position.
So, you're going to lead the way for a lot of others? That's great, thank you, I think this is great. Looking forward to it.
Just a note, then, the TEATER basically is a safeguard, and certainly in this case, against accelerated foreclosure, where if, say, the debt imposed through the assessment for the improvements on a given piece of property was $5,000 or $8,000 plus whatever went into that on an annualized basis to, you know, pay that off, that without that safeguard, the potential is you could be delinquent for one tax period, and there is a process that allows for that accelerated foreclosure, and so you could actually have a, you know, $300,000 house, somebody's home, could go up for foreclosure to satisfy, say, $8,000 debt without having the ability to, it was certainly, as it relates to other property taxes and assessments, to, again, with interest and penalties accruing, but nonetheless, you're given, you know, a period of time, five years, in some cases, more, and that's what the TEATER protects against, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and again, I think it's very important, and again, I certainly compliment our county staff on working to bring this to us today, though, because that's, you know, we had that conversation as related to PACE, as you've noted, but also related to Melrose and other financing districts over the years that I've been on this board, where a lot of times securing, you know, several million dollars in debt, and recognizing that those improvements are important to the property value and to the overall establishment of whatever development is being proposed, but nonetheless, I think the ability for folks to have some, you know, some time to redeem, recognize they'll have to make up penalties and any other portions that would, you know, be, have it sent to a lien, but nonetheless, still have time to satisfy versus going to immediate foreclosure or fairly immediate foreclosure, so. So, well, thank you, Mr. Williams, I guess you were part of those negotiations as well, is that right? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Davidson, so. Okay, any other comments? We do have some, a couple of speakers on this, and if not, so I'll call our speakers, I have Chris Norum, who's been acknowledged already, and then Brian Spillman. And if anybody else wishes to address this, please get a speaker for me, and otherwise, it'll be our two speakers this morning on this. So, Chris, good morning.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Chris Norum with the North State Building Industry Association, representing 500 builders and developers throughout the region. I wanted to begin by thanking Navgill, and Mike Penrose, and Bob Davidson for all their work on this, they did a lot of due diligence in looking into this, and we've been working with them for quite some time, so thank you all, and for your openness to look at this program, so. They did a lot of due diligence, and I want to belabor the point, because this has been a fairly, you know, thorough presentation already, but this helps provide some less expensive financing for a lot of projects, and that ends up translating into savings for the actual homeowner. We did an analysis on an average mortgage, and the homeowner, in the end, because of the less cost associated with doing it and bundling these funds this way, would save around $13,000 over a 30-year life of a mortgage, so this is good for the facilitating building as well as for the end-up homeowner, so. One point that we also want to make is that oftentimes, we're talking about just, you know, how we get the financing, but this is a mechanism for financing that can often make the difference between doing a project and not doing a project. We have members of ours, builders, who have canceled projects in the county because they could not find the financing for their scope of project or what they wanted to do. So, this is a really important mechanism for doing a lot of infill projects and smaller projects, which in Sacramento County, there are a lot of those opportunities, so we urge you to approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Brian Spillman. Morning, Brian.
Good morning. I'd just be very brief and not belabor it much longer, but we do support this resolution, and we think that the Skip program in itself would be a very helpful tool for local builders such as ourselves, where we're looking at infill projects that makes it difficult, we can't reach the large capacity of, say, a specific plan level of financing to do a CFD or Melrose, and by having the Skip as a tool, that will enable us to be able to go out and seek. And by having the skip as a tool, that will enable us to be able to go out and seek more infill projects where they would pencil. And so with that, do encourage the board to vote and adopt for the skip resolution and the proposal at hand.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Anybody else? All right, now I'll bring you back to the board. Any further questions?
Move approval.
Second.
I just move a second to approve the staff regulations outlined. And if there's nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Good, thank you to all who worked on this and.
Good luck.
Okay, all right.
Come back and tell us some good results in a few, six months or so.
All right, we have one more morning item, and then we do have an off-agenda speaker as well, so we'll take the next item, please.
Item 46 is the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, request for approval of tax-exempt bonds by the California Enterprise Development Authority for the benefit of Paratransit Incorporated.
Yoas Young from the County Executive Office. Today's Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing is a request from Paratransit from the California Enterprise Development Authority, of which the County of Sacramento is a member. The hearing is a request to approve a tax-exempt bond issuance in an amount not to exceed $9.3 million. Paratransit is a California nonprofit public benefit corporation dedicated to providing transportation services to individuals with disability, the elderly, and related agencies in the Sacramento community. Before Paratransit can issue these bonds, federal law requires that a public hearing be held and approval obtained from the jurisdiction in which the project is located, in this case Sacramento County. Proceeds of this debt issuance will be used to fund building construction and improvements at the property located at 41, I'm sorry, 7141 Woodbine Avenue, and to refinance existing debt and finance facility improvements, new machinery and equipment at the property located on 2501 Florin Road. These tax-exempt bonds are payable solely by Paratransit and are not a direct obligation of the County of Sacramento or the California Enterprise Development Authority. County staff is recommending the board to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution that approves the issuance of the bonds by the California Enterprise Development Authority on behalf of Paratransit.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this juncture? All right, if not, stand by. We're going to open the public hearing. I do see Tiffany Fink, our executive director of Paratransit here. I don't know if she or anybody from.
Yes, we do have representatives from CETA and Paratransit.
Okay, and CETA as well, so. I don't have anybody signed up to speak, and so I'll open the public hearing. And if it's someone who wishes to address the board, I don't, Tiffany, I see Tiffany come forward, so. Good morning, Tiffany.
Good morning, I'm Tiffany Fink. I'm the chief executive officer at Paratransit. We thank you for considering this. As many of you are probably aware, we've gone through some restructuring recently with Sacramento Regional Transit and really looking at our costs. And one of those things we did was look at things such as our mortgage and bonds and needs. And so this is an item that allows us to look at some cost savings and efficiencies to redo that. It also allows us to extend that benefit throughout the region to help our partner agencies. And so this is just one of the actions we've taken to kind of bring in expense.
Okay, thanks. All right, anyone else wish to address the board? They're here, obviously folks from CEDA and Tiffany.
I'll move the item.
All right, I just moved, so we'll then close the public hearing and the motion to adopt the attached resolution issuing the bonds. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Thank you all. Thank you for the staff presentation. And that concludes in the agenda items. We do have an off-agenda speaker and without Mr. Saunders, James.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning to the board also. Thank you, Don Natoli. I spoke to Letitia and she's been working with me on my situation as far as finding a place to stay. Also put in there for her to have investigated the sheriff department and their comings into it. I also repeated again that I'm still homeless, still don't have a place to stay. I also showed them my shelter, which was my car, and how it was totaled out. So it's more of an urgency. I suffer from, I'm asthmatic, I have many surgeries that I've taken. And the reason I'm saying that is because I've been directed so many different directions from Step Fours to Victor Contreras to Volunteers of America to this place and that place. And the foregone conclusion, since I've spoken here approximately eight, seven or eight months ago, is that nothing has been done, nothing has changed. I did try to go as improper as I was told by Scott Peters, my former public defender, to go back to Raymond Management and you can pull all the files from you being medically injured, having disability and all that. When I went in there, I was met by, Michael Peters seemed very disgrunt, never had him that attitude before, but he was filed into paperwork as one of the managers who allowed this to happen. It's a true story, but a realistic one that, hey, house arrest, I was the one who called 911. On the phone, you can hear me getting attacked. And also they left plenty of the evidence still there. So I would like some things resolved. I request that certain things be investigated because I've had certain people to investigate and come up with nothing. Bottom line, and which is first, is that stability in a shelter. I am disabled, I do have health problems, and I do try to rise to the top as far as trying to be a priority. I've also went to, on I Street, to Housing Authority, they said I'm on the list, but they don't see me on the list, rewrite the list. I also went to the library. What I found out was that we did the whole sheet, submit, stopped it. I have copies of that. I took photos of that just in case you need it. So I just want to thank you for your time, though. That's most important to me. And I know as a board, you're doing so much work, but I need some work done for me. It's a lot that happened to me, and if you can explain it to them if they do not know, it's a sincere seriousness that I need much concern and dealt with.
Okay, thanks, James. I would just say that I know you did, Letitia, in my office, did spend some time, some of your requests have been forwarded to the office inspector general for the sheriff.
Thank you.
Law enforcement, those have been forwarded very recently. And I know that even as recently this morning, that Eduardo Amenniero, who's with Department of Human Assistance, Mr. Contreras, I know have been trying to find, you know, help you find a solution to the homeless.
That was one of the things, was a lot of people was trying, but that's not what they said to me. They said, "We can only find you shelters and cooling places." I told them, "I'm in it because I need a place to stay." I was falsely evicted and I need that to be dealt with, these things that I'm talking about. So I want to be clear on those.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, we're going to keep working on it and hopefully, we won't be back here too many times before we're able to help you find some stability.
Okay, well, you know, as long as I can come humbly and speak before the board.
You're always welcome here, so.
Thank you, sir. So who should I look for or talk to?
I know that, again, we, through our office, we forwarded, you know, certain requests, but I think Mr. Lake in the past has been involved, you know, when you've been here and so.
Yes.
And yeah, I don't know, maybe some checking down through your channels as to particularly the situation relative to housing. I think, again, the other issue, some requests for records and some investigation, we forward it to Mr. Brazil.
But just someplace to rest my head because I'm 15 times more likely for something to happen and I've had my cane stolen, which I don't have here today. I've had my wallet taken, I had to regit. It's very difficult, you know, and I try to come here looking.
You're very presentable and we're glad to have you.
And wash up, clean up whatever I can, so.
Well, we're glad for that, glad for you and glad for that. So, Mr. Gil, if you could check, we have Mr. Saunders' contact information. And I think it's important to, James, I know you, there may be some difficulty communicating by phone because I don't know if your phone's on all the time.
I have to keep it, I got it, but I have to keep it off most of the time.
That's fine, again, because I think there's been some attempts, again, as has been explained to me, to reach you at different times, whether that would have changed circumstances, just a heads up on that, so.
Okay, I certainly will. And I also gave the email, so you can.
Okay, I think we do have that, so, okay.
Appreciate that.
Very good, thanks.
Should I speak to this gentleman later?
Yeah, just in a minute.
Yeah, okay, yeah, as soon as we break, then Mr. Gil can talk to you. So we're going to break in just a second, so. So stand by, good. Thanks, James. Okay, anything else then for the morning session?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, we do have closed session. We're going to take up at least one item closed session that's in advance of the afternoon discussion, then the antenna, I guess, has come back after the afternoon session with the other remaining closed session items, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because they do require, in all likelihood, five of us, so.
I'm still waiting to get a text from Supervisor Serna on what time.
Okay, we'll take one item in closed session that's in advance of the.
Are we going to do that now or at 12?
We can wait till 12.
We could do it now.
Would you prefer to hold off?
I'd just like to do it all at once. I don't want to go in and.
No, we're going to do.
Be waiting for Serna to get here for part of the closed session?
Yeah, for, there's several items on closed session, some of those require, we don't think he's going to be back here before noon, so, but there's one item that requires our attention before the 2 o'clock session. So that's, so we'll take a brief closed session and then have to return probably later this afternoon for the final lives.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, so 11:30 we'll go into closed session, so. Okay, all right, we'll be back and open at 2 o'clock.